We'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council here. Everyone's here except Councilwoman Ford, who is out of town. And if you'll stand, our -- Robert Updike is going to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Anthony, do you need this door open? I said that on that door would not make any difference to him when he got ready to leave. All right. I think we started this at the last meeting. From time to time, we have citizens who volunteer their time and efforts to serving on different committees within the city. And I'll just tell you that the city could not operate without volunteers who volunteer on all these different committees. But with all committees, they have to take an oath. And tonight, we're going to swear in people who have taken the time to serve on certain commissions and commissions. And I'm going to read their name, and then I'll have them all come up, and we'll do it all at once. So David Wrights, come on up. Steve Brown, come on up. Just take this, because you'll need to read this, otherwise you'll not know what I'm saying. Steve, how you doing, man? Frank Hester. Frank's got two, as a matter of fact.
Sitting at the press table.
Vicki McBride. Didn't see Vicki. I'll give you two. Joyce Rayner. Come on up, Joyce. David Hamner, is David here? I didn't see David. If they're not here, we will get them two of them, so. All right.
City Secretary has to swear amen.
You'll raise your right hand, and I'm going to say what I need to say, and I'm going to say, "I," you state your name, and then I'll go to that. So I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of -- and read what's on there. You got it. Of the State of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations. All you've got to do is sign them.
You need a pen? Steve, how you doing? You need a pen? You can have them. Yeah. Boy, you better take it. You don't give many things away. Man, I've got so many pens until you can have them, and I won't miss that pen.
Come on, hurry up.
David. All right, item four on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity to anybody to address us, and I did not have anyone sign in, so. Item five, we're staff reports. Item 5A is city manager announcements.
Mayor, I just have one announcement. Want to take this time. We received some information from the Houston-Galveston Area Council announcing that Men for Change Inc. received an award. The Sowing Project was selected as the winner for their Parks and Natural Areas Award in the Policy Tools category. As you may know, Men for Change partners with Missouri City on the Buffalo Run Park, Community Garden, and we provide for physical space and also infrastructure, and they actually plant and maintain that garden. So we're very happy that they were able to be recognized for the hard work that they do.
You bet. That's an awesome thing. All right, and item B, update on 2016 Initiative One is the body camera implementation.
Well, Mayor, as you know, there are a number of big initiatives that we're embarking on in the first part of this year. One is the body camera implementation. We've purchased and received 105 units. The chief told me to pass this around so you can actually see the cameras. They will become part of the standard equipment issue. Our IT department is currently configuring the units to assure that they're working properly according to how our officers will be using them in the field. We also are in the process of creating some policy development on the usage and storage according to state law, and that's being implemented. We should be completed with that by January. And lastly, our hope is that in February, the Police Department will commence training related to preparing for that rollout in March. That's body camera implementation. As relates to open and carry, as you may know, House Bill 910 went into effect on January 1st, and per state law, we have pertinent signage throughout that's already been posted. I think you may have seen some of that postage when you came in. As well as, it's now legal, as you know, for Texans with a handgun license to carry handguns in Plainview in a shoulder or belt holster. So we just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we did go into effect on January 1. Our team is doing their due diligence to provide information on our website so that our citizens will be aware of that new law. Our next item is solid waste. We want to provide you with an update. The city's contract with WCA went into effect on New Year's Day, and we are looking forward to a successful seven-year partnership with the provider. The 1250 base rate in the agreement results in significant savings for our residents participating in the plan, and 93% of the city's homes are now covered under this one contract. So I want to take this time to thank Bill Atkinson and our entire city team for the hard work as part of this implementation. The next item is the 2006 U. We all feasted during the holiday season, and to help us shape up, the Parks Department is really working to get us back into an interactive experience and fun and fitness program over the course of the next several months. So until March 31st, work out at the Recreation and Tennis Center. We're encouraging that we really energize our citizenry and get our employees actively engaged to be active as well as fit. Most of our employees, as you know, participate at our rec center, and we're encouraging them to continue to do that, as well as the citizens that we have in our community.
Anthony, for the citizens that participate, ready to write, they get tokens.
That's correct. They'll -- one of the things, they'll be able to gain some tokens, and they can be cashed in for the coupons, and they can use those for gift certificates or free gym memberships.
Very good.
All right. The last item, Mayor, actually before I introduce some new folks that are here in the audience, is our comprehensive plan. Our citizen committee has met prior to this year in preparation for our advisory committee for the comprehensive plan, but we also are looking forward to hosting a comprehensive plan symposium on Thursday, February 18th, and it's going to be held at the Hampton Inn and Suites. And the event will feature a presentation by Dr. Stephen Kleinberg from Rice University. So we're looking forward to that discussion and want to make sure that the community, as well as you, are aware of that particular date. Last, but certainly not least, as you know, we have a number of executive vacancies, and we're very happy today that we've been able to finalize three professional services agreements for Parks Recreation, our Planning and Zoning Department, as well as our Finance Department. In the coming days, we plan to finalize our recruitments for those positions with two recruitment firms, and our hope is to fill those positions in the short term. At this time, I would like to introduce a number of those individuals who will be a part of several professional services contracts. James Brown, recently retired Director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Sugarland. James brings a wealth of experiences in a number of communities. It parks departments throughout the state, including Sugarland, Rowlett, Texas, and the city of North Richling Hills. I forwarded you their resumes, and we want to take this time to welcome James to be a part of some great things that we're going to be doing in the coming months. Our next person that we wanted to introduce is Kelly Carpenter. She will be joining our Planning and Zoning area. She's currently working in a private practice, but joins us with a wealth of experience working in areas including Plainview, Texas, Baytown, Texas, El Paso, Texas, Denton, Texas, and Lauderdale, Florida, all of which are executive-level positions in that area. So we're extremely happy to have her to be a part of our team during this interim.
Very good.
Thank you.
Last, in our finance series, you know we were working very hard over the course of the last month to make sure that our CAFR was submitted by the end of the year, and I want to commend our finance, our interim Finance Director, Michael Higgins, who did a yeoman's job, quite frankly, having a number of vacancies in that department, took on, with his team, some challenges, and were able to get, work with our auditor to get those reports in. But Rhonda Blaskis is a CPA and will be joining our team. She brings a variety of experiences, not only in the public sector, but the private sector. Most recently, she served with the city of Friendswood in the finance, executive finance area there, so we're very happy to have her. I know Michael was ecstatic to see her walk through the door since he's been working so hard, but we really want to take this time to ask him to come tonight to be introduced to you, because they're really committed. None of the individuals are Missouri City residents, and it's their opportunity to serve their community and to serve the city in a great way. So we want to thank them for their commitment and look forward to the great things that they're going to do in contributing to our community in the coming months.
Give them a hand. But congratulations also goes to not a new employee, but an employee who has a new last name. Maria is now Maria Jackson as of November the 25th. Right? So. She wasn't going to those salt grass dinners. She was on her honeymoon. No. No, congratulations to Maria. Anyway, I got an email from her today. It was signed Maria Jackson, and I'm going, "You forget to tell us about something, Maria." And she said, "Yeah, as of November the 25th." So congratulations to you, Maria. All right, item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed? Councilman Rulis made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings. There are no public hearings on zoning or otherwise. Item eight are appointments. We've already taken care of part of that. Item nine is 9A is consider authorizing execution of a contract for a classification and compensation market study. Who has that? You have that. Do we have a scout with us? Did I see a young man back here who's a scout? Stand up, please, sir. Tell us who you are and what troop you're in. You, yeah.
Devin, we're coming. I'm in troop 649.
Yeah, two.
Very good. Guys, you know, I'm going to give you the opportunity throughout the year to come up here and present the colors and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I know you do a better job than Robert. Just tell your scout leader to get in contact with our City Secretary Maria Jackson now, and she will set that up for you. We love having our scouts come and do our presenting the colors and leading us in our Pledge of Allegiance, so.
Thank you.
Good. You bet. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor, as you know, this particular item authorizes execution for our classification and compensation market study. Over the course of the last month, we've been working, Dr. Williams, as well as Bill Atkinson and myself, with the consultant to try to finalize the study. Our hope is that in the course of the next four months, we'll be able to come back with a recommendation regarding where our employees are with the market. Dr. Williams is here to answer any questions or give you some general overview, a general overview as relates to what we're planning.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Essentially, we have been working with the council subcommittee to ensure that the compensation for Missouri City employees remain competitive with the benchmark cities identified by this body. Our plan going forward as it relates to this coming study, this proposed study, the contract which is in front of you today, is to look at about 78 non-exempt positions, 29 exempt position, 19 positions in the police, 13 positions or titles in the Police Department, 10 in the Fire Department, and directors level, a total of 16. And so we're going to use the salary structures. The idea is to update the structure based on the pay plan in each of these based on job families. And we're looking at, as the city manager said, we're looking at approximately three to four months. It will be more of a family evaluation of the established or current structures, simply because doing an individual survey would not be cost-effective, and it would be, certainly be, time-consuming. At the risk of spending too much time, details that may not be of importance to you, I am open to answering any questions you may have.
Will the study be completed prior to budget? You said three months.
Well, Councilmember, as you know, our budgetary process starts in January, but before, I recommend the budget to you. We will, our hope is that we'll have that, and since it's a four-month, that looks, I think it's around April, so we'll have an opportunity to share that with you before any final recommendation of the budget.
And the reason I ask that, because one of the things that we discussed and gave some direction on going through the last increases that we did to raise the level of employee service within our strategic plan and structure.
Okay.
And that's the reason I ask.
Okay, sir.
Dr. Williams, when was the last time we did a study like this?
The last study that the city did was in 2014. That was only for one of the four structures. To answer your question, the last time we did a market study of all four structures was back in April of 2013.
Some of the items that we looked at last time, I believe, was certification for our public safety folks. Are we going to take a look at those also? And I think there were some that we kind of put in the background and said that we wouldn't, wouldn't do anything at the last review that we had. So are we going to be looking at that as part of this?
This particular study will not include additional pay, simply because we're looking mainly at structure. And as you know, the more you add to your study, the more the cost of implementation. So we're trying to get, first and foremost, to ensure that our salary structures are consistent with the market cities and our benchmark cities. I think the issue of total compensation, which includes certification pay, is one that the city will need to take on gradually and over time, simply because the cost can be prohibitive if, in fact, you go into individual certifications. We did, however, made an adjustment to certification pay for police officers last year, and I think at this point, we are very competitive with other market cities in terms of certification pay for intermediate advance and so on, police officer certifications.
Okay. I'd like to ask a couple of questions, directed towards the city manager and also Dr. Williams. This study, does it, first of all, what are we, just to be clear, what are we trying to do here?
It's my understanding that council policy says that our public safety team will be at 100% of the market, market median, and then our other employees will be at 95% of the market. So one of the things, on occasion, you have a study like this to assess where our employees stand in the market. Last year, as you recall, there was an adjustment made for public safety, and there was some discussion about coming back, looking at all of our employees. So this allows us to be able to step back and look at where we stand in the market, and then ultimately, before the budgetary process, for this body will bring the findings and present to you to make a determination on whether or not we can implement some of those recommendations to put our employees, because we have great employees, and our intention is to try to see if there is an opportunity for us to raise them up in the market so they're competitive. I can tell you, a large amount of folks want to take our talent, and what we want to make sure is that if we're competitively, competitive from a market standpoint, we want to make them know that not only do we appreciate what they're doing from the wages that we pay, but we have an environment that's good enough for them to want to stay in Missouri City, and that's our goal.
And the last question is, does this study afford us the ability to project to future years in some way?
That's a difficult question. I will tell you this, Mayor Pro Tem Smith. One of the challenges for Missouri City, through no fault of our own, is that our fiscal year is a July 1 fiscal year versus July, versus October fiscal years. So one of the things that I think, and I recommend, that we basically become comfortable with the idea that at some point, we will be leading the market. Sometimes we will be lagging or behind. It is almost impossible to remain 100% of the market when you have a move-in target and different budget implementation starting period. So the idea should involve having some flexibility in your ranges or movement within the range of a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum salary structure. So the better answer, the more, the simpler answer to your question, it can, but it really depends on the market and what all other cities in our benchmark cities do regarding salaries and their compensation philosophy. There is a city close by that's argued generally that they want to lead the market, which means that at any time there is an increase in the market in terms of average salaries, they make an increase the following year to adjust. It's a constantly moving target because we're competing for the kind of, almost the same pool of eligible applicants. So it's a matter of remaining consistent within that market average and be comfortable with the fact that at one point, we'll lead the market, or we could be at market or slightly below market. That's just kind of the nature of how it works.
The other, the other point is that last year, when we suggested that we do this market study and continue to do the market study, is a result of what you just said. If we don't do these studies, we will fall further behind. And so the studies are warranted, whether we give an increase or not. We need to know where we stand.
Yeah, this needs to be a proactive rather than reactive.
Right.
Didn't we consider, because we are on a July 1 versus October, that we actually put some additional dollars in there so that we could try to stay or anticipate what the other cities are going to do in October, so that we didn't immediately on October 1 fall behind, didn't we?
Yes, sir. We basically aged the data to a future date, which means we added a small percentage to the final numbers so that by the time there is an adjustment to the, to the other cities and, or benchmark cities, there would be at least some parity between our salaries. Although we achieved that result, just on some of the averages and from hearing constantly from some people, our police chief, it appears that the market is slightly moving ahead again. So we were ahead for quite, for a couple of months, but there are cities who are dedicated to staying ahead of everyone else, including Missouri City.
But we'll look at that also as a consideration as we make the recommendations.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
You know, when I, when I went to work in healthcare 45 years ago, the number-one shortage in healthcare was RNs. Today, the number-one shortage in healthcare is RNs. You just have to keep working at it and keep this continuous cycle and be proactive. The fiscal year really doesn't have a bearing on this. It's how we make the adjustments and how we look at the history of what's going on with the other places and apply it to us. So we shouldn't really get hung up on fiscal year as much as, what are we going to do?
That's why we're here.
That's right. It's only so much money.
Mayor, that concludes Dr. Williams' presentation. I would like to say that one of the things our finance team will be working on is a five-year financial plan. We think it's important, when we talk about these adjustments and the market studies, et cetera, that we have a long-term view on where we're going to be financially, five years, factoring in some of those assumptions as we move forward. So we'll be having further discussions with this body during the budgetary process related to that.
I don't think moving the fiscal, the fiscal year, although it doesn't have a complete bearing, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just kind of adding them to it, but it would kind of, you know, be, add a little ointment to the, because most, there are a lot of cities that are out there who make the adjustments during the first of the year, which kind of gives them a six-month up on.
If you're satisfied with that answer, that's true. But there's historical metrics out there that hopefully with this consultant that y'all can work on and figure out what that metric is, and you can defeat some of that. Okay? Because the cycle is just going to continue, so it's how close you get to defeating that cycle. And that comes back to us and how much we're willing to put out in money.
The most common method out there is basically aging the data, where you project based on a 12-month average and use that, that information to adjust salaries or project the starting salaries. Of course, the unknown is, you don't know what the other cities are doing in terms of the size of their salary increases, so you're projecting based on the unknown, but you assume that it's somewhere between the national average, 3% to 4%.
And we're using the same consulting firm that we used in 2013?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Edward.
Item 10, ordinance is 10A.
Is there a motion?
Oh, is there a motion?
It's a motion.
Yeah. I know. The discussion was over, but we've got to authorize it. Is there a motion?
Some.
Motion by Councilman Emery, second by Mayor Pro Tem Smith. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Now 10A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 18 Businesses of the Missouri City Code, amending rules regarding the inspection of hotel guest registers, security cameras, monitors, and recordings, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Hi, Mayor. Chief. This one's relatively simple because the Supreme Court of the United States has a new case law out there. Basically, it now makes it unconstitutional for us just to automatically require a hotel operator or proprietor of a hotel to show us the register or their video camera or video footage. So this is City of Los Angeles versus Patel, came out in June 2015. It shouldn't create too much of a problem for us, primarily because we only have two hotels and we have an excellent relationship with them. But bottom line is, we asked to see the register or the video footage. If the person that's in charge of that declines our access to it, we simply ask for an administrative subpoena or basically a subpoena to get the, get the information. But they can certainly consent to it and let us look at it. But what we're asking for tonight is council to approve the amendment to the Chapter 18 rules regarding hotels in our code of ordinances.
But you still basically can subpoena them.
Yes, sir. We can.
But this doesn't affect if you need to see it if something happened, a crime was committed? Is that, is this?
Well, that's generally why we're going to ask to see it if we're investigating some sort of crime. So, actions, these circumstances, you know, we'll probably have to play that case by case and let that play itself out in court, but as a matter of investigative practice, if they refuse to allow us access to see it, we'll simply get a subpoena. And our folks are pretty much trained to do that anyway. But we, like I said, we have an excellent relationship with our hotels. Generally, if we ask. All two of them. True. So, and they're both very nice hotels.
Somebody going in and robbing, I hope they let you see the video.
No, they generally let us see that.
And if I may clarify, under the Constitution, if there are exigent circumstances, there are allowances for inspections.
As some elected official in California. Ah, some elected official in California got found going into a motel, so we got some-
No, sir.
Make the motion to move.
Second.
Councilman Morales made the motion, and Mayor Pro Tem Smith made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Chief, I'm just curious, what's the turnaround time for a subpoena or something like that?
It depends. We actually have a, quite a few judges that live in and around in our, our city, and every time they come to one of our functions, they always tell us, if you need something, you know-
Call us.
And we have taken advantage of-
We have a few judges.
Knocked on their doors in the middle of the night, and they are more than happy to review the paperwork. Usually, the, in these circumstances, our district attorney is working with us, and they'll put the request for whatever it is, whether it's a warrant, subpoena, whatever. So, normally, everything goes relatively smooth. So, it's case by case. It's rare that we have to wait very long. Thank you.
Item 11, a resolution 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, allocating hotel occupancy tax revenue to the Elkins Band Booster Club for the encouragement and promotion of the arts and the transportation of certain tourists and making certain findings relating thereto.
Move to that.
Councilman White made the motion, Councilman Morales made the second. All those in favor?
I'd like to discuss it. Why did this come about?
Good evening. Happy New Year. As you recall, on December 21st, we brought before you a request on behalf of the Elkins High School Band Booster Club, as they were, event is being held in this area, and they have been able to attract judges that would be staying within one of the two hotels we have in our community, judges and some other officials. And so, we have funds, we collect hot tax funds, those funds are, have a number of uses that are allowed by law. Working with the hotelier and the booster club, they had requested up to $3,000 to support the transportation and expenses for the judges, and so, we brought forward the request at the last council meeting to consider this, this resolution, and before you today actually authorizes the expenditure. The last discussion was only to get your feedback to present you with a resolution. So, what this does is it authorizes us to expend up to $3,000 on behalf of this project and to reimburse the Elkins Band Booster Club for those expenses. Those expenses would be reimbursed, obviously, after they have incurred the costs within our community, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so, actually, Elkins Band Booster Club is certainly deserving of our support, and I get that understanding that we are going, we are doing our due diligence and a policy is forthcoming. So, what happens between now and then?
What we have, and thank you, that's a good question, is, as you may recall, our recommendation at the time was to consider that we would be processing any further requests, and we really haven't had any, but we would, should a request come in between now and the time a policy was put in place, that we would evaluate it as the policy was put in place. There was the intent to come back to this council for the adoption of a policy within short order. So, given the timeframe that we've had between the zero request and this request, and the timeframe we anticipate others, that we don't see there's a problem. We've also talked to the hoteliers to let them know that we anticipate a policy forthcoming, and that we would be processing any further requests underneath that policy.
But the other, the other point to that is that we can't spend that money other than for situations similar to this, and that their requests, I assume, I understand, met the state law requirements.
Yes, this, their request, we, we worked with folks to make sure, legal and also folks at the state, to make sure that the request was allowed under state law. Secondly, because this is a one-time approval, should any requests come forward, we could not take any action on it without coming back to the city council in the first place. And we would not want to put ourselves in a position where we were asking you to approve another without having first brought forth the policy and having given you due consideration for that policy.
But the point I want to make, so, I don't want people to think we're spending city money-
Right.
-to do this. We're spending money that was generated by Hotel Accumb seat that can only be used for situations similar to this.
It has to be used.
Yeah.
There are limitations. In fact, Ejoy's-
That's the main point I want to make, yeah.
It has to be used.
Ejoy's outlined the use-
But we can't elect it anymore.
I'm sorry. Ejoy's outlined the uses of those in August as a part of the allowable uses under state law, and essentially, the, the premise is heads in beds. The funds have to be used to support the, the addition of heads in beds and promote the hotel industry. There are some allowed uses, requirements for cities of our size for a percentage to be used for advertising. There are also some, some things for the arts and historical preservation. This is really, to the meat of it, though, to bring events into the community and bring heads in beds that grow our hotel industry so we have more taxes, tax base to be able to promote a successful economy.
They're spending their own money.
Money that they're generating, helping us generate. It's a tax on the hotel room nights.
Yeah, there's like over $400,000 in that fund.
The laws are exact, but the parameters as to how the money is being spent, there is some flexibility there. So, what we have to do within our policy is to make sure that we have some guidelines for future decisions on, on these type of things.
Certainly.
That fit the law.
Yeah, that fit the law. In essence, we all know that what, the whole thing is designed for tourism and also bring, bring people into the hotels, and, and, and I think that, as I mentioned, the parameters are flexible enough that where we can be creative in that area, within the realm of the law.
As well as the policy provides a guidance that the collective view and wisdom of the council that says, here's how, the priorities that we have as a city for the use of those funds underneath the, the legal framework.
And now that we got a gentleman from, from Sugar Land with our Parks Department, certainly, I'm sure he has some ideas as to how we can work that to our use.
Ted James, I put you on the spot back there, babe.
Having worked with him before, I can assure you that he has.
Yeah, yeah, just worked with him.
We invite everyone under the table, under the tent to work with us to make sure we have one of the best policies in the state, sir.
All right, there was a motion by Councilman White, and a second by Councilman Morales. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item 11B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation for overtime activities by law enforcement to reduce the incidence of traffic collisions, injuries, and fatalities, agreeing to provide matching funds and containing other provisions relating, related thereto.
May I move to that?
Second. I understand Dwayne's under the window?
A job-related issue today. You stop at a red light, the car behind you also has to stop. He was actually the stopped car, the first stopped car.
Who's?
Dwayne.
Oh.
Yeah, he was supposed to be here, so.
I got you.
I'm the older, less fatherly-
Well, let's explain a little bit what it is.
Yes, sir. This is a continuation of our strategic traffic enforcement grant. Sergeant Cox over our motorcycle division actually did the lion's share of the work on this. Again, this is a continuation of the, the grant that we already have. There is a 20 percent match, so whatever monies that the state does give us to offset our overtime costs to work strategic traffic enforcement, we're responsible for 20 percent of that. Basically, they'll pay 80 percent of our overtime is how that works out. So, bottom line is, the federal government has granted $10,963,001 to the State of Texas to disperse to agencies requesting this grant. So, like I said, we, we've already got the grant in play, and the one that we currently have expires in October of '16. So, this is seeking your approval to, to go ahead and apply for it again.
Do you have a dollar cap?
We know what exactly we can manage, and there is, I don't think there's actually a cap, but we've, we've put on-
I mean, for us, and we set our own cap.
We technically did. It's right at $51,639 is our, is our cap.
Good word.
Very good.
If, if I may, and the chief and I and the city manager spoke a little bit about this particular grant, it does require the city to adopt a disadvantaged business enterprise program set forth by the State of Texas. We have had this requirement in some other contracts, and we've been able to talk to the Department of Transportation to obtain modifications to that. We have put in calls to the department, so we are attempting to get that requirement taken out of the agreement. I know Scott Elmer has talked to some folks at Tech dot regarding some other contracts in which this language appears. We did include language in this resolution that makes it subject to an agreement between the city and the Texas Department of Transportation with, regarding that language.
Mayor, excuse me. From Mayor Council's information, we have been working with Department of Transportation on some existing contracts that had that language. The original advanced funding agreement that we applied for with the state did not, well, we were able, as the city attorney said, we were able to put a if applicable clause in there. They are willing at this time for those existing contracts to allow that same modification, but the message we have received from Tech dot is no more. All future contracts, if you get any money from Tech dot, you're going to have to adopt this, and it would apply to every purchase you make.
So, what does that mean?
That means that we would have to follow the state's disadvantaged business program for every purchase that we make.
So, I mean, but what is that? I mean, I mean, it may not be as bad as it sounds. I mean, I don't know.
There's a lot of parameters, but in general, it will increase our costs for all purchases.
What we'll do now?
It will increase costs for all purchases.
Can you give me a definition of what the disadvantaged program means?
I can give you a general, I don't, because I don't have the statute right in front of me, I can't give you an exact definition, but generally speaking, it's a program that basically requires, or requires governmental entities to set a goal for contracting with specific types of businesses. If I remember correctly, those businesses include, I think, women, minorities, certain types of businesses like that. And so, it requires local governmental entities to actually set goals and to report and record as to whether or not they're actually meeting those goals. Now, if we would, I mean, it sounds like we're, we may have to adopt a state's program. The state sets its own goals. I do believe there is an allowance for local governments to alter those goals, but I would have to, to double-check that. But it's essentially a program that would require the city to, to abide by the state's program for contracting and utilizing certain types of vendors.
But for as much money that we do get from the state, we look like we probably have to figure that out, huh?
If that's their position, I wasn't aware that they were, they were not going to modify-
And we just got that word, I apologize, we just got that word right before Christmas on that, that they're willing, because the, the original funding agreements had that clause in there, they would let the amendments go to that clause, but they're saying any future, on the transportation side at least, amendments, you would have to follow the state's purchases for all, all purchases, whether we're buying toilet paper or radials or anything.
How would that hinder us by complying with that law? Would it hurt us in any way? Does it delay anything?
There's going to be, we're going to have to do an analysis, but there's going to be increased reporting responsibilities, increased paperwork responsibilities, increased delays in bidding, because you're going to have to go out and reach out and document you reaching out to different agencies-
Correct.
-or minorities.
Aren't we doing that with our Small Business Initiative already, though? Didn't our Small Business Initiative help apply towards that? We've already adopted that?
It's a lot more extensive than our current-
Well, I know that, but I'm saying it's, is a step in the right direction where we, where we already have in place, we're going to go.
Mayor, we wouldn't be starting from scratch, but I think at this point, what we have to do, if indeed we move forward with this, to, is to assess the DBA, state DBA program, to look at whether, what's the delta, the gap between where we are and what we have to what they're requiring, then at that point, update. If, if indeed the council wants us to move in that direction, we'll come back to you and say, here's what we would need to do to be at that, to be, to adhere to their policy.
And there might, if I may, there, there might also be a need to do additional analysis of the contracts that the city is actually letting in that, in order to justify awarding contracts under the program.
But I think the important thing here, too, is that we know that we probably going to have to do something, because we get a lot of state money, and we have, have had a lot of projects wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for some matching. So, we just going to have to adapt.
I was just going to say, our small business is just that, small business being that it has to be a company of 15 million in annual income revenue and 500 employees, and then we only have it for certain types of projects, so it's very limited, limited scope.
No doubt.
And it doesn't say that you have to give it to them because they're the highest bidder. They still got to be the lowest bidder.
Under small business?
No, under this contract, they still, all it says is you give them the opportunity to bid on it. Doesn't say that you have to give a percentage to them even because they're higher than everybody else.
If I remember correctly, yes.
No, that's, yeah, that's right. It just says that you're giving them the opportunity to bid on it. They still got to bid competitively.
Correct. On our, our current policy, yes.
Yes.
Rather than piecemilling that we're going to come back and, and be comprehensive about this-
Yes.
-this whole decision-making.
And, and, and whatever agency we're dealing with, they're going to tell us whether we are complying or not anyway. There's, there's no, you know.
Yeah, and not all of them qualify to bid anyway, so. All right, there was a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Smith, and a second by Councilman White. All those in favor?
If I may, I apologize, this resolution is written subject to their approval of our modifications, so based on this discussion, would you like us to strike that language? And just to-
No, we're not, we're not changing that. We, you're telling us in the future, that's what they're going to be coming with, so let's just move forward.
Okay.
Do we have to come back and do it? Then we just come back and do it.
Well, give me a minute here. Would you read the, the resolution?
The, the language that I'm referring to?
Yeah.
Sure. Whereas the City Council of the City of Missouri City desires to approve an application to be submitted to the, the Texas Department of Transportation for a selective traffic enforcement program, grant to support overtime activities by the city's law enforcement agency to reduce the incidence of traffic collisions, injuries, and fatalities, subject to the Texas Department of Transportation's acceptance of the city's proposed modifications to the Texas Department of Transportation's terms and conditions.
And a motion would say we will approve this, understanding that in the future that we're going to have to comply with the, with the Texas regulations, right? And we're aware of that.
That sounds like that's-
Yeah, I think that's what the whole discussion was about.
As it says, we're going to do it subject to the transportation-
I want to be clear, Jerry, I mean, we have to catch up with you sometime, but just allow me to-
That's true, that's true. You do have to catch up with me sometime.
Yes, yes.
One of the things-
Approving subject to the transportation policy, yeah.
One of the things I would suggest, at this point, our, our city attorney, we had made a request to the state. I know our Public Works area and, and Scott have had conversations as well, so if you would allow us the opportunity to really make sure we're talking to the right person-
Right.
-and then to make sure that they understand what our situations are, because our situation may be totally different than others, and I hope is we can explain, here's where we are. But if, if the mandate is that we need to be, to adhere to the DBA, we'll come back and make that recommendation and give you the presentation at that time.
Chief, we certainly want this to go through. We also want to comply with, with all regulations, and we also want to be able to operate with the essence of, of what this whole decision-making process is all about.
Yes, sir, I understand. We have a meeting with Tech dot, I believe, on the 7th of, of this week, actually, so-
One thing we have here in Missouri City is there's a gentleman who was hired by Tech dot to make sure that, that Tech dot adhered to and, and enforced those laws that had to do with, with purchasing and so forth, and I think we know, as a matter of fact, they, he was the one who wrote our Small Business Initiative, so we do have expression in this area here.
All right, very good. Need to vote?
Yeah, we need to vote.
Motion carries. All right, we'll reconvene back into our special session, it's not closed exactly, it's just special.